All right, I'd like to call the meeting of the Seaside School District, October nineteenth meeting to order.
United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All righty, looks like we have a few things to add to the agenda today.
Yes, we have some updated financial reports. As well as in addition to the consent agenda of some high school coaching recommendations for the fall. And the last item is an action item. To recommend revision of the district equity loans that the board approved a couple of years ago.
I move to modify the agenda to include the requested additions and corrections as noted.
A motion has been made and seconded to modify the agenda to include the requested additions. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Right, reports, student business. Let's welcome Ella Crater.
We're going to go first, we have our slide. I don't have anything prepared for you guys tonight. I apologize in advance. ASV hasn't officially met yet. We're going to have a meeting next week. And hopefully I'll be a little bit more prepared next time. But what I do know, we have, sports are starting up. Volleyball and soccer tryouts as well as football and cross country are starting up this week. I think our first home game is on the twenty ninth and Pet Band will be there too. So that'll be pretty exciting stuff. We have a band camp going on this week as well. So welcome the incoming freshmen and get prepared for that first game. And yeah, I think that's, that's all I have.
That's good stuff.
Thanks, Ellen.
Well, already, let's see, we have a transportation report today.
Hi, good evening. My name is Chris Peters. I'm the transportation supervisor. We don't talk much transportation during the year because we're always focused on moving the kids around. But I've been here for about a year, both in the district and the year and in this role. And I really love being part of the team that you see here as well as part of the bigger district team that supports the students. One of the things I learned about myself this year is I actually like riding the school bus a lot better than I thought I would. You see here both our drivers and our pit crew, but what it doesn't show is there's a lot more within the district, a lot of folks behind me. And the staff that really helped move our kids around safely around the district and it's great to be part of that team. And help deliver on the mission statement. And our mission statement, safe and pleasant ride for everyone, has kind of evolved this last year and I really like how simple and crisp it is. The pleasant part was not there before, but as we've gone through the year and seen the challenges on the bus. Everyone deserves to have fun and enjoy and have a safe environment, both from road issues, but also the environment they have on the bus. And one of the things for the next slide, Greg, every day we focus on the little things, right? It's about what routes coming up, who staffed, are we here, are we on time, et cetera? But it's not until you step back in the big picture and see what we did, you can really see some of the impact. Some of the kind of cool numbers is a hundred and fifty thousand rides to school. Five hundred athletic trips, two hundred thousand miles driven and over twenty thousand gallons of fuel. So a lot of things go into this every day and staffing, so the next slide is a really big part. We've had a lot of staffing challenges this year or staffing changes this year. We lost five very experienced drivers to retirement or attrition. But we've been fortunate enough to hire seven new drivers, six of them for school buses, CDLs. We weren't able to do that ourselves. We had to partner with particularly Beaverton and Warrenton because our two trainers both retired this past year. And so that's been really great to get involved with other districts. We're learning a lot from them. We've also added a head secretary, which has been critical to help support the drivers and some of their needs when they come back from rents. And as a result of that, has been able to add a couple of services. We added a PM route. You might say, well, that's not a whole lot, but we actually transport sixty percent more kids in the afternoon. And it's the afternoon loading and we have athletic trips and school trips. And so what were happening is we're taking away from very high population of drivers, one of those athletic trips. And so that really constrains the loading in the afternoons. We've also been able to staff a full-time trip driver. Kind of experiment, we played with that a little bit. So we've got someone who's going to be doing that full-time. We have over two full-time equivalent heads for drivers needed for trips spread out across the entire year. And then the other thing we did to give some more flexibility is we staffed a van driver. Someone who's not a CDL to support the Northwest Regional ESD demands of the app. The other thing we've done, we kind of three big key initiatives I'm going to talk briefly about. One is we are upgrading or have upgraded our routing software. We use Tyler Technologies, a company, a program called Traversa. And we went from the core to the advanced, but it doesn't sound like a very big deal, but it's a fundamental underlying change. Of how we build routes and the rules, try to using automation into assigning routes and getting better, more efficient. So we have to go through the entire district and which roads are safe to walk on, which roads are not safe to cross. How far do we want the kids to walk to the bus on average? Where do we want to establish limits? Do we want to use a group stop? Or do we want to use individual house stops? What's the best safety? What's the most efficient? What helps teach life skills as they grow, as they go up through the different degrees? And then determining if we want to do a stop with lights on, or do we want to do a stop that's off-road? So all these different kinds of things go into this and you can see just some of the complexity. This is just downtown seaside, the little circles are stops, the little pins are students. And so you can kind of see that complexity in seaside. And on the right side, you see the routes that we have planned excluding our EI. But you can just see the kind of long tails that we have to cover the large district, large area that our district covers. So we're really excited about putting that into motion. The next thing we're doing is to try to give our parents some additional tools. And we take a lot of phone calls. The parents are always asked in the schools, where's my bus? Where are we? My student hasn't gotten off yet. This new app that works with our software is an app and a website that allows the parents to sign up and connect to their student. To see their routes that are coming up, to see when they load or offload the bus. It can predict, show them where the bus is, show them that they missed it. Show that they're running late. I think if we go more than five minutes off our scheduled time, they'll start giving them a two or three minute alert saying the bus is coming with a new ETA. We can also communicate through them. So instead of going through parents where, let's say a route goes down, right now we have to communicate to everybody in the school. But we can pinpoint those students and families that are affected through this app so they can just get that communication about the bus. So we're really, really excited about this. We piloted it back in the spring with several staff members that had students and they really, really liked it. So we're rolling it out now. About a hundred and fifty families have signed up as we prep for the year. The last thing we're going to do, and I want to lead up through this, through the stop arm thing is we are, we just did a completed a camera upgrade on our buses. And one of the impetuses was when I was going through training last year, one of the things that I was learning was that the most dangerous part of student stops is folks that are running the red lights on stops. And I was like, no one does that. I've never ridden, ridden one. They're so visible. How would you ever do that? And so I came back and I was asking the team, well, do we have this happening in our district? And they said, every day. And I went, no way. So we started informal tally just on the board every day. People come and say, I had a car that passed me when I had no red lights out. We had over a thousand passers throughout the course of the year. There's a national survey that we do as school bus drivers and ODE, Oregon Department of Ed does that. So one day in May, we actually physically count and they have to attest to it and sign off on it. We had a lot of data. We had twenty-three in that one day in May. Most of them are happening in the afternoon. Traffic's more, most of them happening front to back. So the vehicles are coming towards the bus and passing and they're all passing on the left-hand side. So just kind of give you a feedback of some of that data point. And so next slide, what we did was we wanted to figure out what could we do to take advantage of some of the newer technology? There are stop arm cameras that are being rolled out across the nation, across bus fleets. We have embraced that and we've about two-thirds of our buses, all of our route buses will have stop arm cameras now. And we also had a variety of cameras are also really important for the student management, student engagement around behavior. So we also had different views from all different angles. So every time we'd have someone working with the schools. But I didn't get a really good angle on this, so we standardized our camera layout. So we're going to have for all of our new buses and all of our route buses in a camera design. We had our view from the driver's perspective out to the road. We get it over the shoulders. We can see the driver who's actually driving and when they're loading and unloading students, which is typically where we'll interact with the public most as well. We have four interior cameras that get the full cross section of the vehicle. And then we have two cameras on the exterior side and left side. One is right underneath that stop arm facing backwards, which gets license plate data. And the one that sits up on the very back left-hand side of the bus, we call the context arm, where you can see all the traffic on left-hand side and the traffic out in front. So it gives you a really good view and that's where you can see when the stop arm is out, you can see the vehicles that are passing. So that's what we've just put in place. We just finished it on Friday. As we go forward and we get the labeling on the buses, we can start to engage local law enforcement to figure out if or how we want to do citations within partnership with them. We've got a lot of different law enforcement agencies to go contact with, so we're unsure how that will work. We have reached out a story to some of this. I talked with their chief of police. And so we'll see what kind of the resources and capabilities are, and capabilities there. So that's transportation amendments.
Is this monitoring, is it for the bus driver or is there someone off-site that someone's watching as well?
It's, it's being recorded and we can request events. So the bus driver has a, can hit an event if they see something. We'll get requests in the school that the student reported that something happened to them on the bus. So we'll pull this data. It is hard drive based. We added a wireless upgrade capability. So when the buses come in, we can upload it to the cloud. We have to wait for a network upgrade, but we can still, we're basically pulling hard drives and video, finding segments and using that as needed.
So this is, this is great. Would like to kind of understand a little bit more as you roll out this piece here, the like, so what are we doing about it? I imagine that like statistically, there's a number of child strikes per one million non-stops or whatever it is, right? There's going to be some horrific number out there. And what we have of a thousand counted is just a countdown towards that child strike. So as you kind of build out a, so what are we doing about it? Would like to know like what, because this is, this is great, but it's only to your point. It's only a deterrent. People know about it, right? And if we're partnering with the local law enforcement, that's great. The local state or the state police, the captain for the state police here has two kids in the school district. Like there's, there's a lot of good opportunities here, but would very much like to know like the follow-ups for this. And I don't know how often you report out, if it's once a month. Awesome. But would definitely be curious to see like what that is. And then to the point of what resources, you can always say this. What resources do you need to, hey, this is what I'm doing. This is what I could be doing with more, with additional resources. That would be very, very helpful. And can you go back a couple of slides? That's the scary one. One more. One more? Nope, we'll go back. So, so I guess the, oh no, it was, it was too back. One, one more. Yeah. So this is, so this is great. This is miles traveled for the last two years. Now you roll up a new application. You can associate all of those miles, all of that fuel with costs. So the end of the year, six months in, three months in, whatever, would like to know what that new application, because I'm sure that costs money, is done to help those numbers so that we can further justify investments in those types of applications and show them the ROI there. Does that make sense?
It does. It's an area that I have wanted to get to. And part of it was starting to get some of this data and seeing what the trend lines and what they're telling us completely. So yeah. To put, that's the dollars and figuring out, are there things that we can do to make us more efficient? I think is, is something I definitely want to look at. I spend a lot of time thinking about efficiency and effectiveness and safety. That's one of the things that, and that whole school bus stop strategy, right? There may be streets that look especially right now, really good. Yeah, kids could walk down that and we can make not two house stops, but make one. And they start thinking about, well, middle of winter, super dark, rainy, maybe we don't want to go to that. So those are some things that again, I don't know how they fall into the, the cost efficiency and things like that. But I think that's the next step. And I think that's something I see wanting to come in and talk more about.
No, that, that's great. And I mean, you're associating those miles easily with dollars, right? The fuel. And then if you're able, because of the application to reduce miles, not, not making kids walk farther, that is not what I'm saying. Absolutely not. But let's show that return on five thousand, I can't, I'm sure Tony knows exactly how much we spend on fuel at any given time. I just put a dollar to it. That's great.
And one of the things we're dealing with right now, there's, depending on where the kids are living in the district, on the very far right-hand side, the lower part of the age, right? If that student wasn't there, we're saving us twenty miles round trip twice a day to get that student. That may be not something we can control, right? It'd be efficient to try to get them there, but we're responsible for transporting them. So figuring out how that puzzle works is all part of what we're doing here. So I think it's a great suggestion. I think it's something to be completely mindful of and report more on that.
I think it's so clear, your love and dedication for the students and their safety. And I really appreciate that. You've made me excited about transportation. Also the pleasant, I love that, that you care, the experience that the kids are going to have on the bus every day. Because we've seen the stories and we've seen the situations of what kids go through on the bus, you know? And so thank you so much for that care that you're putting into it.
Yeah, I just want to commend Chris, you know, he's been here just a little over a year. And you know, one of the first things we talked about was what kind of improvements can we make? And, and it's been really great working with you and continue to work with you on those priorities. You know, you talk about priorities and being able to, to really focus on upgrading our systems and the cameras has, it has been such a good investment. I know it's been a lot of time, so thank you.
The support I've gotten from you and the districts have been wonderful.
Summer school reports. And we have a few of us. I just want to introduce Ann Cissy was the coordinator of credit recovery at the high school secondary level. And Grace Franky was our summer school coordinator at the elementary level. So before I turn it over to them, I just kind of want to answer the lingering questions from a previous board meeting. One of the questions was, who do we hope to serve during summer school? And I wanted to give a little bit of background about that. Each time that we've been funded for summer programming, ODE has had slightly different parameters of what the focus is during the Esser flood of money. Our focus was really on getting people back to school, getting them to have enrichment opportunities. This year, the focus of our grant money was all about literacy, about trying to bring up the scores of students that were below grade level in English and Arts. So in order for us to identify those students, we look at our, our baseline data and our growth data. We take data on students concurrent through eighth grade. We do it at the beginning of the year, we do it at the middle of the year, and we do it at the end of the year. So that we're, we're monitoring student growth, every single student K through eight. Students that are not meeting grade level, they get progress monitored about every four weeks. And so when we're looking at what is kind of the most effective lift for us? We're not looking at our absolute bottom tier. Those students are most likely going to be getting pretty rigorous services through individualized education plans. We're looking at that tier of kids that if they just get a little bit more of a, you know, intensive one-on-one instruction, we may be able to bump them up to the next tier level. That being said, there were a couple of other things about summer school this year. Our core programs had to include eighty hours per student. That's quite a bit more than we've had in the past. And it also required testing, you know, assessment at the beginning and at the end. I'm really, really grateful to both Grace and Ann for running their programs. Besides their two programs, we also have, we, right now, today and yesterday, we had a transition summer school for rising ninth graders. We also have a transition summer school for our, for, for students that qualify under certain categories of special education. And we also have extended school year for certain students in our, our special services program that qualify. And so we run quite a, quite a lot of programming during the summertime. So without further ado, I want to let these guys take it away.
So at Summer Bridge, I'm Grace. At Summer Bridge, we had two main programs and then tutoring. So we had a summer school program that serves kids who were going into anywhere from first through fifth grade. We had two classes and we split, they were like mixed grade level based on level. So we had twenty-nine kids there that focused, like Kate said, everything was so literacy focused. But that didn't mean we didn't do other things, right? They did literacy. You can see some of those pictures like through science. We took a field trip to Haystack Rock. And we had a visit from the seaside public library to make some connections on that front. The kids did great. I got to teach one of those classes. It was fantastic. It was small class sizes and they got a lot of independent instruction. We also had one of our interventionists was teaching with us. So every kid got thirty minutes of phonics instruction with one of our interventionists in groups of like four kids, along with all the literacy instruction we did with the whole class.
Sorry, question.
Yes.
What's an interventionist?
Our interventionist, so they're like going to focus on academics. So like they're providing an intervention of like extra support basically.
Just like
Another teacher.
Another teacher.
Yeah, but like focuses on that. Yeah. And then we also had twenty-five jumpstart kindergarten kiddos. So those are kids who are coming into kindergarten this year. They're adorable. They're, most of their first times at school. We only had a few tiers the first day. By the end, we had none. It was great. But that's a two weeks. So like Kate said, the summer school program was eighty hours. Jumpstart kindergarten requirements are forty, so it was forty hours. So that was two weeks. We were running eight to noon every day. Every kid got lunch before they left. But the jumpstart kindergarten kids, they did some basic academic practice, but really they got to know the building, got to know two of our kindergarten teachers. And then they did learning stations, outdoor explore time. They even did like miniature specials. So they like went down to the library and went to the gym went to the music room, got lots of experience. And then we had eight kiddos who were going into second through fourth grade. They got targeted one-on-one tutoring twice a week with two of our tutors that were focusing on phonics skills. And those were kids who we didn't think summer school would be the best fit for them. Maybe like four hours wasn't going to be perfect. So they were either half hour or hour-long sessions for those eight kiddos. Or like it didn't fit with their family's schedule for them to be there. And then, so this is kind of like our data. We completed data. It was kind of hard to compare it for the summer school kids because it depended on what grade they're going into, which assessment they took. But we did it at the beginning and end. And of all our kids, twenty-three of them were there for both assessments. And of those twenty of the twenty-three made growth in at least two of our areas. And many of them made growth in four or more of the areas. Some of the tests had four sections, some had five, some had seven. So just depended on what test they were taking. This was mostly phonics based, so it's like being able to break apart a word, being able to tell this part, like the sounds in a word and then being able to encode and decode. But the kids were reading and writing every single day. We went on some hikes. That's us at Haystack. And then the jumpstart kindergarten, by the end, all of them were able to write their name, which is really exciting. And we saw some growth in their letter recognition. But like I said, the most important thing with those jumpstart kids was that they were just so much more confident and comfortable coming to school. So it'll help them out when they start school in a couple of weeks. They got to meet some friends and that will be in their classes. That's when we did it at Summer Bridge.
Are most of those kids, kid that did not do any kind of preschool?
We target kids who didn't attend preschool first and then we reached out to anyone. So there was some who had never been at school of any setting, some who had been at our preschool, some who had been in different preschools. But that's who we target first is those who have never attended. Yeah.
So for the high school, we had thirty-three students who signed up. I think we had like twenty-six originally and then six contacted me during the summer saying, hey, I need this. Overall, as of yesterday, thirty-six half credits have been earned compared to twenty-six last year this time. We have four students, one is on her final test, and then we've got the three who are working ahead in probability and statistics. And they'll be done by school start. So that will end up being forty half credits. So yeah, five or more will have another half credit by start of school. It was myself, Julie Green was focusing on the science group. Gooch was here in case students wanted to come in for tutoring. He focused on the math. And I was the one getting emails at like three in the morning saying, hey, can you reset that test for me? So I was really impressed. A lot of the students like started July, they were just going. A lot of them had their classes done by the middle of July. Some of the kids though, you know, decided to wait till about two weeks ago. So. But yeah, I think this year, there was less us emailing them saying, hey guys, let's go, let's do this. The students had a lot more ownership this year, which I appreciated. So yeah, and it was kind of a variety of students overall. And I'm sure that they'll talk more about the summer bridge next meeting. But we had thirteen yesterday. We had, we picked up one today. We took them to the rope course yesterday. And even the kids who were really scared did at least one obstacle. We had one young man do three rounds. And it was fun watching some of our older students who were working there kind of help out the younger kids. We then took them to Hammer and Stain where we all made little placards. Today we started off at the Swan Boats. And some of those boys are really good at pedaling backwards. They could have turned those around. And then we went out to Coffinberry Lake where we did kayaks and they were having a blast. So the kids overall had a really good time. Definitely, I think that will pick up next year. Yeah.
So remind me again, the bridge is like eight to nine?
It's the kids who are coming into ninth grade. Tellemuk has been doing it for years. It's a way for kids maybe who are a little scared about coming in, like the kindergarten, maybe students who might be. I don't know if Jane and Lynn like picked certain kids or if it was just open to everyone. But it's kind of targeted for those who might be behavior issues, just for us to build kind of those front-loading relationships. It was myself, Lynn Addis, Haley Warrow, Kaylee Waldemar and Jane Foreman. So it was all fun. I think we'll get, because even some of the older kids are like, wait a minute, why don't we get to do this?
Another question, because I don't know much about high school. With the credits, is this credits, that's high school credits or is this college credits or?
Yes, they're high school credits. So basically, the program is designed for those students who did not pass the class successfully first time. So some of these were students who needed to pass those courses to play sports. Some are just behind to try and get caught up. Renee signed up three to get a little ahead in math. We had hoped to get them through probability, statistics and geometry. But I mean, like one of the kids I looked at, he spent like forty-five hours on this course. I mean, it was a little bit harder than they thought. So we'll get through problem stats. How they're going to work geometry, I'm not sure. But it's a program called Apex. It's what we use for credit recovery. And so we're able to monitor how they're doing. If they don't quite do well enough on a quiz, we can reset it. We're able to monitor their end result, their end tests. I'm not sure how many kids, I'd have to check with Andrew Gooch. I'm not sure how many came in for tutoring this year. I know last year I had a student that came in like every week for math help. But we, I think Julie also zoomed some of her kids and helped them assign.
So they, they don't, they're not here. They just do all of this. So they, they don't, they're not here? They just do all of this at home online?
Right.
In your contact to help.
Right, a lot of them are working, so you know, if they wanna do it at two in the morning, then go at two in the morning.
Yeah, that is.
Andrew did have a lab though where people could come and
Yeah.
Yeah, he was here every day.
So students can also not necessarily be behind, but can move forward.
Um, usually it's not for students to move forward. Um, Renee came up with some special deal for these three students in math. Um, we do have a student who's graduating early this year. And so she was doing her um junior English this summer, so that she can just jump right into senior English when school starts. But yeah, usually we don't let them work ahead, it's more, you didn't pass, let's get you caught up.
And can you talk a little bit about how the credit recovery courses um take advantage of the prior knowledge students?
Yeah, yeah. So the way Apex is designed is, you know, a lot of these students, maybe they just it was attendance issues, maybe they missed a big project. So this program, there's a pre-test for each unit, and if they do well enough on the pre-test, it lets them skip that section. It's like, okay, you know this. You're good. And so a lot of students, you know, like sometimes I look, I'm like, okay, you did this course in like three hours, but it's because they knew the information, it was just for some reason they did not pass the class. And so a lot of kids like that opportunity to make up. However, the credits are pass or no pass, so it does not affect their GPA positively or negatively. But gets in the credit.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Good.
Um, you go back to this, their, her side. So, one of the things we talked a little bit about on the last one, um, less concerned about the kindergartners, love that. Just bring them all in, that's all. Um, but on the summer school piece and the tutoring piece, uh, twenty-nine attendees. Um, what metrics are we looking at to determine who should be there? And what should that number have been? And what do you need to, or to close wherever that gap is?
Yeah, um, there's not necessarily like a number of like what it should be, it's just whoever's willing and able and a lot of like, especially in the summer, it's like if they're on trips, then they're gonna say no, right? But we've, the way we reach out to parents is we started based on the data from the school year, like Kate was saying that we took like the section that if we gave them a boost, then they're gonna get to the next level. Um, I think, I don't know, our goal would have been like what for?
So, uh, our, our goal also rests upon how many staff we can actually um recruit for summer school. We found out very late this year that we were actually going to get a grant. And by the time that you find out, most of your employees have summer plans. So we are really fortunate in that we have run summer programming um the last couple of years, and we have a pretty core staff of summer employees. So that's, that's the lynchpin, that's the critical piece. How many people are we able to get to, to run programming? Um, and then we have to sort of sift through other considerations. If we don't have um behavior support people on staff during the summertime, then it's gonna probably limit the type of behaviors that we can invite on campus in the summertime. So that's a consideration. But as I said before, we look at our test scores, we look at the bottom tier. I think in kindergarten, it was twenty-nine percent of kids that were below grade level, turned out to be like fourteen kids. We knew that we could support more um students than that, so we might, you know, bump it up to uh kids that are falling in a, a little bit of a higher percentage range. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I, I, it's, that's super helpful. Um, I think what I wanna just come out and ask though directly is, okay, so it was twenty-nine. Are you saying that it potentially could have been fifty? And if it's fifty, why wasn't it fifty? Was it because, you know, ten of them, the students just didn't show up? We did the outreach, we had the resources, we had for it. And they just didn't make it, or and then eleven was because we didn't have the teachers to support it? That, that's what I'm trying to
There's a decent amount of parents that like we reach out to and either it doesn't work with their summer plans or they're just not interested in having their kids in summer school, or just don't respond at all, like, like that happens too.
Probably like t- ten to twelve percent of the parents that we invite are uninterested or unable.
But I would say overall, the kids, like um, majority of parents we reach out to that were like, we're inviting your child because X, Y, Z, they were like, yeah, let's go.
Yeah.
Well, and next year, if I can interject here, next year will be better because like Kate said, they notified us really late like this year, and so there was very little planning time. Um, but um the funds that the legislature has put aside are for multiple years. So we'll be able to get started a lot sooner, planning for summer school. You know, uh, in an ideal situation, you really wanna start planning for summer school right after the first of the year.
Right, yeah.
So that that way, um, uh, you know, s- staff who are interested in teaching summer school, but and haven't made their plans, you know, in theory they'll be more available. So um, I, it's gonna be, it's gonna be fun to see the difference between this year and last year, when the barrier for the uh, the funds arriving to the late will be removed.
I will say like this is my third year during some sort of summer school to some capacity, and this was the best attendance of the kids who were there that we've had. Like, they were, more of them were regular attenders than probably we've ever had.
And it was a much bigger time commitment. It's typically been like uh two weeks and it was four, four full weeks. Uh, and again, like for me, our, my biggest consideration, as soon as I know that I have an allotment of funds is, who's my staff? Who can I get? So like Susan said, if I can start looking for summer school staff in January, it's gonna really make a difference on how many students we can serve.
Yeah, so that's my point, right?
I don't really know.
We, no, no, you, you've done beautiful. Like that, that's great, exactly what I think is.
There's fifty slots available.
But let's put it back on us, because what I'm hearing is like, if I have more resources, I can get more teachers. We have resources, we can appropriate funds accordingly. Or we can at least have this discussion as part of the planning, budget planning process to say, we have a need for hundred fifty thousand dollars. You say, I need five teachers, I need this much money for it, like boom, then we can come back, right? I need this many, five hundred thousand dollars, like whatever it is. And then we can all make an intelligent decision to say, okay, we are going to allocate resources to that, we're gonna depend on this grant. Or we're not, and then you can say, okay, great, I have a need for fifty students, I can only support forty.
Let me just say that um before we actually found out that we were getting state money, we in fact did that as a school district, because our, we had run out of our kindergarten transition money. So we had already committed as a district to take um and fund that summer school program through our general fund. Plus, every year we've typically funded our um our uh credit recovery through our general fund as well. So, you know, it is, it's that kind of that balance between the capacity that we have to fund the most critical programs. Or, you know, if we get a windfall from the state, how, yeah, how many people can we serve? How many students can we serve? Um, and we tend to think of some really pivotal programs as the most critical. Transition kindergarten, um credit recovery, transition sped, E S Y sped. You know, those are kind of our, um, if, if we don't get any funding from the state, those are the ones that we're gonna fund first.
Love it. Play on your page, not criticizing program efforts at all. We do a good job in this budget planning process. I was saying, this is what we're gonna do. But we don't do a very good job of saying, this is what we actually needed to do and what we're not gonna do. What I'm hearing from you is that if we had had more resources, there could have been more students in this program.
We, uh, we had plenty of resources, but we didn't find out until
More of a time constraint.
It was more of a time constraint. And the nice thing, um, when superintendents uh started learning about, because um, the legislature put, um, you know, put those funds forward and then it has to be approved by the governor. And um, the nice thing is in the past, it's been where each year is either funded just as an individual year or we receive no funding, and then we prioritize. But uh, a lot of feedback we gave them was, of course, number one, we need to know earlier and look at a multi-year process. Uh, so that we know that uh, you know, we have two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to spend over three years. And, 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 and then the next uh bit of feedback that they got from us was, if we don't spend, um, if you break that two hundred and fifty thousand into three years, if we don't spend all of that, we carry it over to the next year and we can't. So um, I'm, I'm excited um that uh, that the state is listening to that and understanding.
Yeah, there were those And lots of districts that because they got their, their notification of funds so late, they couldn't run any programming at all. They had no staff to do it. So like I said, we're blessed that even in lean years, we've carried on with a skeleton summer school. And we've got people, you know, that have done it enough that we can just say, hey, let's go.
Oregon Department of Ed also came and visited our program.
Yes.
And um, they were very complimentary and um said um that they really hadn't seen a summer school program run as well as ours. So that was really good feedback from them.
Okay, one other question.
Yes.
If, if there's a staffing issue, I mean, if that's what happens say next year, can we reach out to the substitute pool as well?
Yes, we can, uh, and that, that will be nice with having that extra time. And uh, you know, of course, it's always our first choice to hire our own tutors to do that. But it does give us the flexibility if internally we can't fill those to be able to reach out. Yep.
Yeah, because Chuck, you know, lots of teachers have summer jobs. He always had a summer job. Right, exactly. Alright, thank you guys.
Thank you.
And thanks to our coordinators, they really took on a big uh
But um, first of all, I'd like to welcome back all staff. We are up and running. Uh, yesterday was um our new teacher orientation, thanks to the board members who were able to attend the breakfast. Um, and that was uh really great, you know, it was nice to, to meet all the new teachers, um, including our new nurse forward down the hill, um, and some of our other specialists. Constructing Meaning, which is a training we've, uh, we've been, our district's been committed to for a number of years to not only uh learn how to support our um English language learners, but all of our students, this is, uh, you know, uh, really effective teaching, um, is to, first day was today, and that's through Friday. Our new teachers are involved in that as well as some of our, our uh second year teachers or folks who haven't had a chance to have that training. So thank you to our trainers there. Uh, Monday, just around the corner, is our, our welcome back breakfast. Um, that's a great way for us to kick off the new school year. Um, a reminder is that um the board and administrators, they can come by seven to cook breakfast. It's their tradition in our district for um the board and the administrators to cook breakfast for all of our staff and serve it to them. Um, and that kicks off our, our week of August twenty-fifth through twenty-eighth, which uh we work really hard to have a balance between professional development, we're moving forward as well as a lot of preparation time for teachers to be working in their classrooms so that they feel prepared to start the year. Um, uh, September uh second through fifth, and the reason I say uh for that whole week for uh school to begin for students is um, we uh, you know, bring in different groups and I'll, I'll let the building administrators kind of talk a little bit about that. Um, I did wanna say a big thank you to our summer learning staff. Um, our maintenance team is working really hard to uh, to get the buildings clean and um do some repainting. And uh, so I know they've been working really hard. We did have um our, um, our summer lunch program, and so our food service team um has worked really hard on that. And um, and I also wanna thank the administrators for all of our pre-work for the, for the year. Um, next slide please.
Can I get a question on this slide?
Sure.
Uh, the August eighteenth through the twenty-second is outside the regular contract.
It is.
So is there compensation?
Yes, they're paid for that.
Thank you.
Yes. Good question. Um, I did wanna circle back with you about our, the completion of our summer projects. Um, and they had originally hoped with our parking at Pacific Ridge um, uh, to have somewhere between ten and twelve spaces, and they were able to get thirteen, so kudos to them. That's gonna make a really big difference. Um, our additional classroom enclosures to be able to have more classrooms up here at the secondary school. And you can see that um, uh, the library and then um the third floor uh flex space in the high school and the three flex spaces in the middle school. Last week, we did go through and make our punch list and um, and there were really only three things and they've already fixed them. So um, we're good to go. Um, I know you're gonna also be excited that we were, we've been under budget on those projects. So we've been able to add the baseball crow's nest, um, which we all know has uh needed to be replaced for a long time. So um, uh, appreciate the city of Seaside pushing through our um, our permits on that quickly. And that the Broken and Jagger team um was willing to, you know, stay at the coast a little bit longer to finish this. So work can begin as early as next week with demolition and um the completion time is estimated, we um, with everything done with um, uh final inspections by December one.
Awesome. Can I, am I allowed to ask?
Of course.
I was just curious about when you have extra funds, especially for the improvement projects, who decides where those go?
That's a great question. So um, we uh, we really started about December, looking at our budget for the following year. And um, with our capital improvements like this, which is um its own separate fund, we begin talking to um the administrators and the supervisors about what our priorities are. And um, as, as everybody knows, um, we've had teachers sharing classrooms and some of the flex spaces where um, uh, that have turned into classrooms with teachers really needing a more of a, an enclosed space so that there's not so many distractions. So that's the process we go through. Um, in addition to talking to the administrators, um, our um our school board committee, advisory committee, that focuses on our campus, which is Kat and Jason. Um, we really um funnel all that information from them and get their feedback as well.
Thank you.
Okay, circling back in, in May, um, May and June, I shared information about Senate Bill seven thirty-two, which requires every school district in the state of Oregon to develop a district equity advisory committee. This is the same information that I shared um originally with that, but I wanted to refresh your memory that all districts are required to convene these teams by September fifteenth of this year. Um, the advisory committee should be made up of a wide variety of folks. Um, staff members, students, parents, community, and um, and they don't need to run for these slots, they're appointed. Um, and here's some information a little bit on, on the role of the advisory committee. When uh, last time I had shared with you that when this was originally required through Senate Bill seven thirty-two, um, they uh, they, there was the requirement of these meetings um being subjected to public meetings law. Um, but the feedback that they got from us is we wanted it to be a safe space for people, so that was removed. Um, and um, as most of you know, um, in November, or around November is when we need to file our Division twenty-two, which is the report that goes to the state from the previous year to make sure that we're in compliance um with the rules and regulations. So um, to a- add some teeth to that, the district equity advisory committee um, uh will be added to that Division twenty-two. So I'm really happy to share that we are up and running with this committee. Um, in June and July, I sent out invitations through Parent Square for members. We um, we received a lot of We, um, we received a lot of, uh, a lot of people who were interested. And right now, we have two students, five parents and eight staff. Where three of them are also parents, um, involved. We had our first meeting on the fifth earlier this month. And so as of right now, we're, we're had, we're ahead with our compliance. We do still really want to, um, recruit some additional students. So I'm going to be reaching out to some student groups. To, um, have them in, in, involved in that process. And we would really like, um, a couple more parents as well. We'll continue to have monthly meetings and then our goal is for, um, this advisory committee. To present and provide feedback to the board three times a year. I also have some good news about a funding, uh, you know, our funding update. Um, the last I shared about federal funds was that we, um, Division, uh, ti- title. Um, Title Three Part A, our English Language Acquisition had, um, been paused as well as the Title. Uh, Title Four Part A, Student Support and, um, and Academic Enrichment. Those have been restored to us. Um, which we are, um, really thankful for and. Since then, so that was the federal information. Um, and one bit of information we've received from the state. Is that our outdoor school funding, which was normally eight hundred and forty-five a per, uh. Funding that we received per student has been reduced to seven hundred. So that was not great news. But the good news is that that extra three point three million that we put in reserves, we can use to supplement that.
What is outdoor school funding? What is, what is that for?
Our fifth graders go to outdoor school every year. Um, it was probably. Julie, what, five years ago that they started, um. Yeah, maybe longer. I mean, students have been going to outdoor school for a long time, but when it became more of a statewide regulated. With Oregon State running those programs. Um, and for a while, we had kids going, um. In the spring, but then we switched to the fall because the weather's better. And this is a really great, um, experience for our. For our fifth graders, um, our fifth grade teachers, um, select a, a coordinator to, to run that. And, um, it's a, just a really incredible experience for kids. So it's amazing.
So it's not a loss and doesn't, didn't go from eight hundred and fifty thousand down to seven hundred thousand. It went from.
Eight hundred and four, eight, eight hundred and forty-five per student.
How many times, how many students?
Outdoor school, when I first started, twelve years ago. And then that, um, allowed us to, since they were funding it, instead of going for like one night and one day, we go for, I think it's. Two nights, three days. Now they test in their, their funding, they're not going to be able to, we're not, I'm talking to you completely free, um, but. But it's, it's taking on the cost instead of putting that back on the parents. Previously, it was. Um, family had to pay, um, and PTOs and those, um, tried to help out, but, um, yeah, so it's a bummer.
We, uh, it's about a hundred, about a hundred kids.
I wanted to end it out with congratulations to Shantrell Lee, who came and spoke. Um, and shared her, um, her regatta speech with all of you. And, um, it was just congratulations to her. She, um, she's the queen. All right, that's what I have for you.
Can I, can I ask a question? Like to roll it back to the first slide on district equity. Indicates, uh, the, uh, district-wide climate and experiences of underserved students groups. Uh, where are we picking students for this committee? Are they from underserved groups?
Yeah, uh, yes, and, um, uh, like I said, we have two students right now who've accepted the invitation. But, um, it's going to be really important to add some more students. And, um, so, yeah, I'll reach out to specific groups, um, al- also with the help of the administrators to make sure that we have a diverse group of people.
Yeah, sometimes the students that are not doing well. Don't feel that much less.
Yeah, this is a great opportunity. Um, and as I've shared, um, this last year, going through the equity audit. We got a lot of really good information. We shared that information on, um, on August fifth with, um. With the Equity Advisory Committee and will continue to do that, to really focus the work. Right, okay.
Right, looks like Tony, you're up.
Hello. Um, so I wanted to let you know I revised the board report ending July, uh, twenty twenty-five. Um, I started entering all of the, um, the new hires and, and, um, the people who left. And adjustment in workers' compensation, and it was a significant amount, um, difference. So I just wanted to give you an updated look on what that, what that was. Um, the, the actuals didn't change, but the encumbrance did. Um, and we're looking pretty good so far for the beginning of the year. Um, our current, um, payroll specialist has parted ways with the district, um. And we have posted the position on our jobs page. Um, it's open to inner, internal and external candidates. Um, I will be performing and in charge of payroll duties in the interim. And if anybody has any questions about their payroll, just send their questions to me. That would be great. Um, and I did send an email to all staff, um, regarding the change. Um, we have the July and August tax turnovers in. Um, July was two hundred and forty-eight thousand, August was a hundred and thirty-five thousand. And our quarter timber revenue payment for August was four hundred and fifty-five thousand. And those are, um, about average of what we normally get, um, because the tax turnovers in the timber in August. Um, are being paid for last fiscal year. Um, they are accrued back to June, so you're not going to see them on the July report. Um, is there any questions?
Thank you, Tony.
And thank you. Um, administrative reports, who wants to go first?
I gotta come all the way up so we can see. Okay, I know we can see, but. Two new staff members that spent, um, all day Monday, uh, as Susan said, do, doing, um. Uh, staff, new staff member orientation, and I want to really give a big shout out to the tech department. Who was here all day long with them, helping them log in, getting them, um, onto the right learning platforms. Handing out their computers and all of that kind of stuff. That's really, you know, we could do all kinds of fun, you know, bonding activities. Or talk about, uh, benefits, but really what they want is their computer and their program. So it's hats off to you guys. Um, the, um. We, as admin team, I want to really thank my admin team because we've been working really, really hard this summer, actually. Um, starting in June, thinking about the kinds of things that we want to prioritize for this coming school year. And getting down to the place where we're really, really making some decisions about how is that going to roll out? How's it going to affect individual teachers? How's that going to affect individual students? And those kinds of conversations are, um, super important, but not always easy. So, um. Big kudos to the admin team for working together and really committing themselves to all of our students here. Um, and with that said, we have a full, uh, in-service week. Like Susan said, we try to balance, uh, professional development. With time in classrooms. There are a lot of trainings that are really important to get through, like, for example, um, our. Health teachers are all on, uh, implementing, um, new health curriculums, we love to train in that. So it's busy, busy times. Some good fun and, um, exciting time in the school district.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think a lot of the things I was going to share have already been reported on, and so it's, uh, just great to have folks back in the building. Uh, a lot of kids around, which is, is fantastic. As Ella indicated, I was reintroduced to the pet ban this morning from, uh, above my office. So it sounds like we're a little bit light on percussion perhaps, so we're going to get, we're going to get that fixed. Uh, but nonetheless, uh, great to have. Uh, all of our folks back and just the energy, uh, with the new staff. It was really great Monday morning to get to meet. Um, everybody district-wide and then invite the folks that'll be here with us permanently in this building to, um, show them their classrooms and. And all of those things. It's, um, it's a nice, nice boost of energy. Um, and I'll report that the secondary building, uh, currently is. I'm very close to being fully staffed from a certified, uh, standpoint. I anticipate that being, um. Uh, completed by the end of the week. So we're really fortunate compared to a lot of other places. Um, that this is an attractive place to, to come and work and to, to live and, um, so that's kind of where we are. Things are. Uh, moving forward, so, yeah, putting forward having kids back.
Thank you.
Uh, Jason, do you have anything since we're sticking with, since Jeff just went?
Uh, sure.
Yeah, I'll tell you.
Uh, I wanted to just publicly thank our custodial staff for, uh, being very shorthanded here at the secondary building this summer. And, um, it is going to be right down to the wire, but I think we are going to be, uh, ready to roll with our building in. Uh, great shape for, uh, kids to be, uh, rolling in on the second, so very excited about that. Um, Superintendent, uh, Penrod has also, um. Brought back one of our main goals that kind of got lost through COVID, which is attendance. And that's kind of something that's been near and dear to my heart over the years as an administrator. And, um, so as you drive down the hill today, you'll see a couple of our everyday matter signs that are going to start popping up, uh, around town. I'm, I'm trying to put those in strategic locations of people that will not only care for it. Uh, but I'll, I'll get it in a place that's very, very visible for our, our public. So. If you're talking to friends and family, uh, those, the, the buzzwords are everyday matters. Just be in school. Doesn't matter if you're excused or not, if you're not here, you're not getting the same education that everybody else is. And it only takes. Ten days, uh, missed to really start to slip and, uh, eighteen and you are a chronic absent child. And we want to really curb that, uh, behavior within our community. And economically, there's some challenges. Uh, in our community, I think to be, just because people work in the summer, so they, you know, take trips during the year and that's kind of a cultural thing that we have. But we just have to really work to try to change that best we can and, and support our kids as we can. So everyday matters. When you talk to people, it's everyday matters, be in school.
Jason, before you, uh, you leave, can you give them an update on our emergency management?
I can't. So we have, uh, three connects boxes that, uh, through our grant that Sandy, uh, wrote last year. Um, are up on the hill is a partnership with the city of Seaside, um, in, in the event of a major catastrophe. Um, you know, loss of power, those types of things. Uh, we will have some resources at the top of the hill that we can use. To get, uh, some stability in those first initial hours as we're organizing or maybe a few days, weeks, the first week or so. To get people organized, make sure they're safe, uh, make sure they're fed, make sure we're, uh, in some type of, uh, sheltered situation. So that we can, uh, bridge that gap until, uh, bigger services arrive from either the state, county or, or the federal government. Pacific Power has brought power to these boxes. Uh, Inland Electric just took them up the other day. They are climate controlled inside, so. Things won't freeze, they, they won't spoil because of humidity. Um, there's, uh, generators to run. Through propane or gasoline if the power should go off. Uh, I mean, it's, it's really like apocalyptic. Ready to go. We're here to serve our community and, um, out of a twenty-four hour day. We're responsible for, uh, six hours of that. If it were to happen during school, if it doesn't happen during school, then the city would take over the responsibility of the distribution. And the setup and all, and all that good stuff. So tomorrow, we have, uh, water and MREs arriving at, at ten AM. We're going to load up, uh. One of the boxes with all that stuff and then, um, is it, oh. RMD, is that the name of it? Okay, RMD, um, is a private contractor that, um. Uh, organizations partner with to put these boxes in and they're just, they're really, uh, good at what they do as far as setting up. Um, an emergency station that, uh, we don't have to think of the little things to wonder if it's going to work. This is a blueprint and it's solid and it goes, they're going to be here on Thursday to, to hook up the security system. The, uh, our ability to use Starlink to communicate, uh, if there is some type of event. And, um, basically go through that process to kind of show us. These are the things that you need to do if something happens. So they're going to be on, onsite all day Thursday. And, uh, when we're done, we're just like, yeah, hope we never have to use it. So, but yeah, it's, 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 uh, really exciting and, uh, Rick Hudson, who is, uh, with that, uh, company. He's very excited about our setup because it meets the. Most extreme standards that we could ever, ever see. Our boxes are never going anywhere. Uh, they are very secure, very, very safe, um, and ready to roll in the event that we would ever need them.
Thank you, Jay.
Yeah.
How long does the, the, um, last in pertaining to expiration?
Um, that's a good question. So I don't know, uh, on the MREs that we're getting. I'm going to find that information out tomorrow. I know like my own tsunami food storage at home that I purchased is like about ready to expire because I bought it twenty years ago. And it's usually a twenty-year cycle on the, on the food stuffs. Um, the, the information's coming in. We will catalog it and then set dates. So if we had four pallets of MREs and they're supposed to expire in twenty thirty-four, then we would set that date twenty thirty-three. Hey, we gotta purchase this new stuff because it's going to expire within the next year and then there'll be a cycle that'll rotate through. And, uh, all that kind of institutional knowledge will be within a program. So whoever's running that program will know these things are coming up and planned for, but shouldn't hopefully ever get in a situation. It's like, oh, hey, guess what? Uh, the food expired the other day. We gotta order something.
If, if we know like within the year we're going to replace it, do we have a plan for not wasting that food supply?
Yeah.
We would take it to the food bank. And they recommend a couple times a year to, just to go in and take a look to see if anything needs to be replaced. Whether it be food or other supplies and, um, and then of course, if there is an event where it needs to be used. Then to be able to go in and, and do an inventory check.
And it has lots of, I mean, there's, there's porta potties and hand washing stations and we're going to have a, a canopy where we can put in. Uh, potentially a water filtration truck with a tank and be able to make, uh, potable water and, uh. To, and distribute to folks. Uh, they have cisterns to catch water to use for the hand washing station. It's, it's, it's really pretty amazing. All the stuff that's there and it's just in these three big green boxes that kind of sit off on the hill. And if you're not really looking for them, you won't, you won't see them. So it's, I told my wife walked the hills the other day and came down and stopped by the school with my cousin. And I was telling her about it today and she goes, where are those boxes? I said, they're right by the water tower. She just walked by there. I didn't see them. It's, well, they're green. They're kind of back in the corner. If you're not looking for me, it won't pop out, I guess. So, yeah, it's a, it's a neat setup and I'm really excited for the opportunity to never use them.
I feel like Team Pacific Ridge was ready. A really positive vibe in the air with all the administrators in the beginning of the school year. So it feels like it's going to be a really good year. So I just wanted to re-put that out to you that it just feels really positive. We're getting a lot of things done. Jason and I have been working on the handbook. It's pretty much the same as last year's, but the one, uh, big addition is artificial intelligence in there. Uh, and I love, um, how we're showing it with like a stoplight, green light, yellow light, red light. This stuff is okay. On how to use artificial intelligence. Here, you have to kind of be careful, you know, what you're doing and this stuff is absolutely a big no. And it's just such a big part of our culture and our teaching. Uh, it's inseparable from what we do. Um, so it's really important that we advise our students how to use it in a way that's going to help them, you know, and teachers as well. You know, how can they use it to help their students improve academically? Um, I have already booked up nine nights for, uh, Hispanic parent nights, so they're booked, uh, throughout the whole year. So I'm really excited about that and. And um, I'm in contact with uh, uh, Consejo Hispano and A Central Northwest, and they're gonna uh, publicize those on their Facebooks. Uh, and help us, you know, get the word out um, about that as well. And then uh, maybe bring in some information during those nights. Um, we had the very first night that we paired up with, um, I think it was uh, Consejo. Um, we had about twenty, twenty-five parents. I was like, wow. But then after that, couldn't get, you know, at the most, I think I had eight, eight families and then the typical's five. So this year I'm going six twelve rather than six nine, so just all our Latino uh, Hispanic population, um, which is about twenty-eight percent of our students. So really trying to find out what those barriers are for parents making it um, and connecting with, with families and finding out how we can better serve that population. So that's one of my big goals this year. Um, I also went on a little walk up to the perch today, past the perch, and there was a kid working on this big square. And I asked him what he was working on and he said he was working on the base for our disco. Um, and he's gonna put four more out into the woods and he said two more down here. So it's really exciting to see that started. You know, so I think that, that should be up and ready to go out in the wind. Uh, but.
Right there. Yeah, they're uh, put the pads in as we speak.
Yeah, so that was fun to see.
Thank you.
Thank you.
One minute.
Uh, I'll be brief. I think most of what I was gonna say has already been said. Uh, but we're just really excited to get uh, students and staff back in the building, staff next week. Um, it was nice to meet some of our new staff. Uh, we're fully staff certified. We're looking now for an ELD assistant uh, in middle school. So we're looking pretty good uh, there. One exciting addition for middle school for us is that we're changing one of our electives. Uh, it's called Creative Explorations and it is kind of a segue into CTE. Uh, we don't have like a full woodshop class or um, like FBLA or that, but this is kind of a segue program. So we've got some equipment that we haven't had before. So we have three D printers and uh, we're gonna have a laser cutter and we've got some other things. And so that's gonna be really fun to incorporate into um, our middle school curriculum this year. Um, so really excited about that. Um, and while it was sad to lose the flex spaces, it is really awesome to have the additional classroom spaces and the teachers who are operating out of there really excited to have enclosed spaces and lockable doors. Um, so it is actually a really nice change, I think, in the middle school hallways. So. That's.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Hi, everybody.
Hi.
Um, I just wanna give another shout out to our custodial staff and our office staff. They've done, they've done an amazing job. The bridge looks beautiful, shiny floors and clean classrooms and we already have lots of staff coming in and out, especially our new staff. So that's exciting. Exciting to have everybody back next week. It's coming fast. Um, we are fully staffed certified teachers and we had, just have one educational assistant right now that we're still looking to hire. So that's also very exciting. We had several openings still last year. So it feels good to have those positions filled and people excited to come to work. And um, I think the other thing is just to introduce you guys to our two new faces that has a great, so I've got the, the, the Zara Gray here, who's um, one of our assistant principals. And then Ellie Irish Stones in our other assistant principal. So I'm super excited to be working with them and getting, I mean, they're with us last year. And I'm onboarded and admin team and we're almost ready. Yeah. Excited to help students and staff and, you know, improve every year, every year's better year.
That's good. All right.
Thank you.
Welcome. Yeah.
Thanks.
I think that's a whole.
Mm-hmm.
All right. Um, Cannon Beach Academy, Marielle. I saw you speaking.
Yes. Um, we're also looking forward and getting ready for the new school year. We've got two new teachers this year. Um, I'm stepping away from the classroom, which is gonna be tricky for me because I've done that for so long. Um, but it'll be great to, to have um, full-time staff in the classroom, working with the kids and I'm going to be um, focusing on intervention and teaching PEGI. And um, then doing my admin stuff in the afternoon. So um, we're getting a new roof and uh, very excited about that. The city of Cannon Beach um, is paying for that very expensive tab. And um, they are probably going to be done with it by the end of the week. So it is looking amazing. And um, and it's, it's really nice, really nice to have that taken care of for the school year. Um, next week, uh, teachers come into the building and we're doing the same thing, starting with the breakfast on Monday and doing um, in-service training and then um, classroom preparation. So um, that's about all I have. Uh, I do have a new last name, so um, I am Marielle Rogasinski, as of July. So um, keeping my email, but uh, but yeah, so new last name.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Yes.
I, I just a quick question. I was noticing for your upcoming events, you have a Narcan training.
Yeah.
Is that, is that a?
Um, we um, we were, uh, one of our board members um, had attended the Narcan training here. Um, he has older students and he was like, we should um, we should have that, have staff trained.
Okay.
With Narcan. So we're.
It was a problem and then.
Yeah, it's just so that we are fully aware and prepared should we ever need, need it. Yeah, hoping that we won't ever, but it'll be good, good exposure.
Yeah.
You know, to have that. So.
Well, yeah, thank you.
Yes, don't worry about it.
Thank you.
Uh, union reports.
All right, well, I'm sort of back, not really fully back, but sort of back. I've been in and out of the buildings um, with our new hires, saying hi. Um, I'm happy to say they all signed up to be union members.
Mm-hmm.
Um, as the leadership team, we just went to our annual conference. So we're kind of excited about that. Some new stuff has brought to our attention. Um, such as teachers starting, I think, next year. Only had two-year probation instead of a three-year probation. That was passed in the Senate. The Oregon Senate. So that's new. More information coming around that. We're like, oh, what? Kind of eye-opening for Brett. Um, so just excited to start the school year. Work with everybody, see our new spaces. We're very excited about new spaces and shuffling and getting everybody where we need to be. Um, and you know, just yeah, it's a new school year. I think we're all ready to get back into our routines um, and see how much our kids have grown. Um,
Literally.
Lots of negatives. And cause you know, they all come back and say, hi, hi, it's Peter. I'm like, here TV Miller, who are you? Uh, so yeah, less of the time, but just looking forward to a good year with a lot of collaboration. And, you know, team old, team old, but also just excited to be back.
Yeah.
So and you'll see Brett more this year than me because we had role changes. So I'll be the president, he'll be president-elect, so he'll be coming. But you'll still see me because I gotta get hurt here.
Yeah. Thanks, Jane. Um, this Megan.
Sarah.
Okay. Um, public comment.
Yes.
Uh, the meeting will now be open to receive public comment. We value the time and initiative members of the public take to share their thoughts with the board. The board's role during public comment is not to immediately respond, but to listen. If follow-up is necessary, we will direct our superintendent to do so. Remember that we are all role models for our students. Please share your thoughts respectfully. Should any public comment include complaints regarding a personally identifiable, identifiable staff member, the board chair will direct the speaker to proper administrative process found in board policy K, KL, public complaints. Speakers will have three minutes to express their thoughts. We have anyone here? Anyone online? Um, consent agenda. I don't wanna get a chance to read.
Go ahead. You go.
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented, including the additional high school coaching recommendations.
Second.
Right, a motion has been made and seconded to approve the consent agenda. Um, as presented, including the additional high school coaching recommendations. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Um, action items. And so the first action item is our school board goals that we talked about at our last um, our last session. So as a school board, we looked at goals and our first one was to continue development of a comprehensive campus plan. And identify goals for future projects, including ways to brand our district within the community. The second goal was continue seeking out board development opportunities, including participation in Portrait of a Graduate this year. And our third one is identify opportunities for the board to increase community outreach and engagement with at least one significant community event on campus this year. And then we also assigned the superintendent board advisory committees. Any questions on any of those? We need to make a motion to approve those.
I move to approve the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six school board goals and advisory committee assignments.
Second. Uh, motions have been made and seconded to approve the twenty-five, twenty-six school board goals and advisory committee assignments. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Do you wanna pose? Motion carries. Uh, next we have superintendent goals. And Susan, we have discussed with Susan some of her goals for the year and do you wanna talk about those? Would you like me to take them?
Uh, you can talk about them if you'd like. Yeah. So um, the, the three goals that I have set uh, for the twenty twenty-five, twenty-six school year is to continue to develop the Seaside School District Foundation, which will focus on fundraising for our um, Performing Arts Center. This is a continuation with some more specific information um, from last year, which uh, to, to really research the foundation. So um, that's uh, that's up and running. Um, the second, to develop and implement a plan uh, to increase district-wide attendance with the specific um, performance indicators there. Um, and the third one being develop and implement a district-wide Equity Advisor Committee, which I shared about earlier. Um, in the superintendent report as outlined by the Oregon Department of Education Division assurances. Um, a reminder that once these are adopted, we have regular check-ins um, uh, on the progress of these goals throughout the year.
Right, three checks, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
We need to approve the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six superintendent goals.
Second.
Uh, motion has been made to, uh, and seconded to approve the twenty-five, twenty-six superintendent goals. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye, aye, aye.
In the post. Um, next one is the OSBA elections. So this year, our region is um, up for reelection for the OSBA Board of Directors and Legislative Policy Committee. And Sandra's been on the Legislative Policy Committee for the past two, few years. Yeah, maybe three. And then the Board of Directors is a gentleman from Mernonia.
Mernonia.
Mernonia represents all of our personnel. So if any of you have a desire to want to be on the Board of Directors, you can put your name in.
May, may I ask just a little bit of information? Um, the board would need to um, make a motion and take action to nominate someone for either one of those positions. Um, so you have some documents there that list the incumbents, I believe, and um, as you noted, there's a gentleman um, who has represented the North Coast area. Sandra's been representing um, the Legislative Policy Committee for the North Coast. So um, if you want to nominate anyone, you would need to take action and then we could move forward with filling out the forms that are required.
Is Greg running again?
He is.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
Are you running again?
I think it's a nomination, right?
Yeah, we can nominate you.
Are you interested in questioning?
Well. Yes. So if you start, if you start with the Board of Directors, um, it, it would be important to see if anybody on this um, board is interested in that. Um, interested in serving in that role and then um, uh, the board would need to nominate them based on that.
Would they be running against Greg?
Probably.
Probably. What does the role entail?
So you're on the OSBA Board of Directors. So it's like, uh,
The board on board?
Yes, basically, you're at the state level, right? So this is our local level. You'll be at the state level, which you'll be uh, you know, advising basically school boards in a, in a manner that way. It's more of a higher, higher level in, in the school board arena. I guess is the best description of that.
Greg has been running for like, I mean, he's been on the board for like.
Since I've been on the board here, he's been.
I think it's been over twenty years.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, he, he says he'll give up his spot if anybody wants to do it, but.
Do you have an interest in him?
No.
The reason is because you've got, you know, teaching experience, which I think is valuable in a position like that.
It won't make, we don't.
Feet on the ground.
We don't, we don't have to, we don't have to.
Have to nominate anything.
No, you, you don't, you don't have to if, if nobody is.
Where, where do the meetings take place or are they virtual?
Online.
They're all virtual.
Sometimes there's some in-person. Um, but I don't think the in-person ones are any longer funded. So it's kind of a pay your own way. In the in-person.
And where are they? If it's in person, is it like in Salem?
Salem.
Yeah, that's where their offices are. That's what I.
I don't know about for the board, but for the policy committee, that's the thing.
Yeah, you send my lead.
Hmm.
You know, it'll, it'll be, it'll be up for a nomination next year too, so.
At the end, at the end.
Yeah, every year.
Well, I think it's every two years.
I think it's.
I feel like it's any.
It's, yeah. And as you can see in the um, in the attachment, um, the regions are broken into uh, specific positions um, so that there's um, a wide variety of representation between larger and smaller districts.
All right, do we have any interest in the OSBA Board of Directors position?
I think Greg has been doing a great job of, you know, the other interests that he's.
We have to nominate Greg.
No, no, no.
Right. I can't, you know, you vote on it though when it comes.
Yes, when it comes up for um, for vote, once they know everybody who's, who is interested in running.
That's right.
And will, will it be a pamphlet? Like a voter pamphlet? So you learn more.
There'll be information about that.
Yeah.
Yeah, it'll come, it'll be an action item on your agenda and um, OSBA will provide information.
Yeah.
Um, that will include the package.
And yeah, every year it's just been Greg. You vote for Greg. Let you know that no other person there has ever.
Yes, we will.
Yeah. So as far as like, that's essential knowledge on that piece.
Yeah, that's interesting.
I think everybody has a lot on their plate.
Um, Sandra, are you still interested in the Legislative Policy Committee?
Maybe Kat's interested.
Or is anyone else interested?
Definitely not this part, no. It's too many words.
And reading. Yeah, okay. So then we need to nominate uh, Sandra for the OSBA Legislative Policy Committee position.
If nobody else is interested.
I move to nominate Sandra Gomez for the OSBA Board of Directors Legislative Policy Committee Position number fourteen.
A second. Okay, a motion has been made and seconded to nominate Sandra for the um, OSBA Legislative Policy Committee Position number fourteen. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, congratulations on that.
The years have been down since?
I think it's three and two or three.
Good job.
Yeah.
Oh, we have an additional action item, which is the. Oh, we have an additional action item, which is the.
Equity lens.
Equity lens.
So a few years ago, um, the board adopted this equity lens. We've had, um, you know, going through our equity audit has um brought this to our attention that we wanted to revisit it and um and look at the wording. Some feedback we've gotten from um a couple groups is um and if you take a look at the attached document, um number one, who does it impact? Um, it's been recommended to remove racial and ethnic groups so that it is just who are the groups affected by this. And the reasoning behind that that we received was we want to make sure we're including all the groups of um of folks we work with. Um, another uh just minor adjustment is on number four. Who is included or not? Why and why not? No matter how many times we prove something, sometimes we find something and an added S to out. So um anyway, those are um, those are the recommended um revisions that we have and we would need um a vote to to have this provision.
Provision to the equity.
Yes.
Where am I, am I in a say?
We have this. Under the uh under agenda review when um where we added those additional items that you approved.
Thank you.
So, yeah, Susan.
I'm gonna go back up to the top.
Yeah, if you're doing your thing, then if you're following, they should. Sorry, I'm still refining this adding of things at the last minute. Get him in there without making any assumptions about whether.
There we go.
We just need a motion to approve the changes to the district equity lens.
I make a motion to approve the the coverage of early.
A point of order. I want a chance to look.
Oh, I have to. I have to make a motion first and then you can ask questions.
Yeah, right. Yes, I move to. Sorry, I don't see it.
Um, sorry, because of this logistics of adding things at the end. Um, you're welcome to make a motion however you feel.
I, I move to I move to move this.
So move. You move to approve the revised.
Thank you. I moved to approve the revised provisions, like, yeah, what you said.
Of the, of the district-wide equity lens.
Correct.
So I like the changes. They are good.
If I, if I understand, yeah, I, I think perhaps the motion is to approve the revised district equity lens.
Yes.
Document.
Yes, thank you. Now we need a second. A motion has been made and seconded to approve the revisions to the district equity lens. Do we have any questions? I forgot to ask about questions today. Any questions?
So the entire change is striking racial ethnicity.
And adding the S in number four.
And fixing it.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Okay, yep.
Any other questions?
No, not for me.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, motion carries.
So just for your information in um this equity lens um is to be used, you know, for meetings and I I want us to be able to review this issue for our meetings. Um, and then additionally, the leadership team is working on um having a complimentary equity lens to this for teachers to be able to um look at this through through the lens of uh lesson planning for students. So one information on that.
Okay, any uh board reflections or announcements? I do, I have one. Yes, I was, I missed last meeting, but I just wanted to welcome Chuck and Jason to the board and say thank you guys for your commitment to our students. Thank you very much for your.
Just that's why everybody else brought gifts. I want to thank Ella for being here, making a commitment to the school and being part of this board. It's one of my goals that we said a long time ago is have students sit at the table with us and ask questions and be part of this because this is why we're here is because of you guys, right? This is the whole reason. And I also want to say Shannon is an amazing leader. You're doing a wonderful job.
Uh, just a reminder of the all-staff breakfast on Monday. If you can be, you guys will be. Um, okay, anything else to come before the board?
How about our greeter for next?
Oh, who would like to be the greeter next in September?
I'd love Brian Taylor. September, May fifteenth.
Next meeting is?
No, but I gave you a hint out right there.
September sixteenth is our next meeting.
I'd love to greet.
Anything else? All right, meeting adjourned. Thank you, everybody.